2019, would I will call this meeting to order. Would you please, all rise, to say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we get a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Present.
Sylvester?
Present.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
All right, good evening, everybody, once again, and thank you for coming. Welcome, everyone, here to the City Council. For those of you wishing to address the City Council on any item on the agenda or under public appearances, oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance to the council chambers and submit to a staff member as early in the meeting as possible. All right, we're up for presentations. The first presentation is America Recycles Day Poster Contest Winners. Here to present is Monica DiVincenzi of Republic Services. Good evening, Monica.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Happy Earth Day to everyone. I'm excited that we're doing this actually on Earth Day today. So we have two items before you tonight that we're going to present. The first is the America Recycles Day Poster Contest. This is our second annual that we've done in partnership with the city. And America Recycles Day is held November 15th, and it was a day that was created about 10 years ago or so to just have a day focused on recycling, separate from Earth Day. So we launched the contest on America Recycles Day, and we're recognizing them on Earth Day, which I think is a great way to come full circle. So the poster contests open annually to all kindergarten through 5th graders in the City of Daly City schools. And we had approximately 70 students participate in the contest this year from nine different schools, so we were really excited about that. And it was very, very tough picking the winners. If we could, we would recognize all of them. And we're working with Stephen and the city to see if there's a way that we can display them somewhere at the library or a community center or something like that, so stay tuned for that. So with that said, I would like to call up our... So we had first, second, and third place, but then we also had a random drawing winner, so whoever got submitted. And this would be Brendan Kim from Daniel Webster Elementary School, 1st grader.
Hey!
Oh! Oh, and look, I...
What is that?
So I should mention, the theme for this year's poster contest was Feed Your Car Heart, Feed the Planet. So this was Brendan's submission.
Oh.
So if I can have you come down here, we're gonna take a photo.
Oh, my gosh.
And what I'd like to do is ask all the poster winners, when everybody's been recognized, to go outside following my recycling coordinators, Jessica and Nicole. We're gonna do a group photo, and then we want the posters back, so that if we are displaying them somewhere, they'll be there as well. So, okay. Your certificate. Yeah? Please, please, please. Go wait with your mom. Okay. Our 3rd place winner is Jedi, who's a 1st grader from Tobias Elementary School. There's your poster and your certificate. And they get a little Visa gift card or MasterCard gift card, too, so they can buy their school supplies for next year's contest. Our 2nd place winner is Miles Wool, 1st grader from FDR Elementary. Can you hold your poster? And finally, our 1st place winner is Julia Squires, 4th grader from Holy Angels.
Wow.
Congratulations. Wait, wait, wait. We're gonna go stand right here. And the 1st place winner gets $100. So if you guys, if the poster contest winners can follow, Jessica, outside, please. Thank you, that's it for part 1.
Okay.
Part 2.
So continuing with our Earth Day theme, we're excited and honored to recognize seven businesses and schools in Daly City for the 2018 Seal of Sustainability Awards, done again in partnership with the City of Daly City. The awards are an annual program to recognize the dedication and commitment of businesses and commercial customers in Daly City to divert as much material from the landfill. In addition to the recognition and award that they get tonight, each of the recipients will receive a decal that they can display in their window or door, so that anybody who visits them will know that they're doing their part to make our community a much better place to live. We'll also recognize them in our newsletters and things like that, so... And our recycling coordinators that just left, they work very hard with our businesses to encourage them to learn about the programs and participate, but it's not always easy for the businesses. There's sometimes additional costs involved related to labor or the services. They have to sometimes reconfigure their internal operations to separate more materials or get very creative with spacing of where they're gonna add another cart. So we really appreciate everything that they've done, and these are the ones that are here tonight. Together, these seven businesses and schools have recycled and composted nearly 2,500 cubic yards of material in the past year. And if you're wondering what 2,500 cubic yards looks like, that's the equivalent of lining up about 15,600 of the 32-gallon carts end to end. Their efforts resulted in saving roughly nine metric tons of CO2, which is a greenhouse gas, and that is the equivalent of planting and maintaining over 227 tree seedlings for 10 years, or saving the amount of energy it would take to charge approximately 1,150,000 smartphones annually. So with that said, we have three schools getting recognized tonight, and I'd like to call the members of the Green Team of Thomas Edison Elementary. We have the school principal here with us, as well as the teacher who leads the Green Team. Okay, everyone, look at Stephen. And again, if you guys can wait, we'll do a group photo outside. Thank you so much. Okay, next, we have Jefferson High School, who you may have recognized, won this award last year, and they continue to do amazing things year over year, so we had to make sure we recognize them again.
Yes, camera is back there, phone over there, Justin, hold that. Anybody wanna... Camera's right back there, there's another one there.
I can't see him.
You guys now look to your right at Stephen. Thank you so much. Thank you, Monica.
We have Our Lady of Mercy Catholic School. Yes. Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Daly City Market, I don't believe they were going to be able to make it, so if they're not here, we'll make sure they get their certificate. D.C. Station Owners LLC.
Is that D.C. Market on the low soliloos?
Think so.
Monica, was that D.C. Market? Where's that located?
The Daly City Market.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mission?
Sam's.
Sam's?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In-N-Out Burger on Geller.
MJ's favorite place. Where are the burgers?
Some samples.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, Monica, sir, 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 that's one of the council members' favorite place, so remember that face here, okay?
Make sure you say hi. It's our favorite place, too.
And last but not least, St. Francis Pavilion.
Are they all coming back in, or did they leave and went their way?
They'll probably leave. We're gonna do a group photo.
Oh, okay, okay.
If you ask them to come back, I can ask them to.
Yeah, I just, we wanted to say thank you to them and acknowledge them. Can they? Okay, why don't we till they sort of reorganize?
I'm gonna start with the Vice Mayor, working with them. Okay? You guys? We'll get them back, we have a few to line up. I'll take the photos.
All right, well, let me just say thank you to all the participants who were involved in this amazing program, and especially to Allied Republic Services for your role in coordinating all these efforts. I think this is a wonderful endeavor. It's something that's really important for our community. Recycling is a very valuable tool that we can all use and participate in to help better our community. So with that, let me leave it to my council members to offer their comments as well, starting with the Vice Mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Monica, I want to take this time to say thank you. You've been a great representative for Republic Services, and besides this, I know you do so much more, especially for our community, especially for Daly City, and especially for Daly City staff.
Yes.
And to acknowledge other folks in what they are doing, that is what's needed in our city, and I'm glad you are doing that. I hope someday you come out with an award to save on carbon emissions, you know, for folks who drive electric cars, like me. I pride myself, and I look it up all the time, I've saved this much in gas emissions, but thank you so much. Sustainability is the key, and it is for our future. And these young kids who are getting these awards, especially Jefferson High School, I've seen what you folks do. So congratulations to everybody, and Monica, thank you for recognizing them and bringing them before this council.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I just want to say thank you again, Monica, for coordinating all this. I believe art is a viable tool for youth to undertake, like, what they see and what they do, right? In my classrooms, I describe culture as seeing, being, and doing. And when we talk about where we're at in terms of climate change or global warming, we need to have people see, be, and do in terms of finding ways that we are sustainable and we are clean and we have an environment that will take care of us, right? So if we take care of the environment, if we take care of the environment, the environment will take care of us, so thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely a team effort. Stephen Stolti.
Thanks, Stephen.
Talk a lot and couldn't do any of the programs without his support and dedication to making sure that we're striving for everything we can, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Monica, and thank you, Stephen, for doing this for our community. We see a breadth of our community from the very young to businesses here, and I think it's amazing that that seed is imprinted in even kindergarteners. And we see that in their artwork, and that's so important because they are the ones to lead us in the future. And we're all working together to really combat what's happening worldwide. And so it really warms my heart to see that Daly City is doing their part, from the schools to the businesses. So thank you for coordinating this effort, and we look forward to seeing many more to come. Thanks.
Monica, I want to echo everything, and of course, Stephen knows that, I think that everything you do coordinate, it shows how the city works well and how we all work together as partners, and you are just like, you've done so many outstanding things in our community. But I want to give you a sample, like Jefferson Businesses, our JEST Schools, and I want to let people know that this is a dream of, in particular for the Edison School, for Elaine Francisco. Last year, when she spoke about having a Green Team, she never thought that she would win, the team, little team win, the little team that good. They're the smallest ones, they're the little ones, and in that small one, I want people to know the difference that it makes locally but internationally. One of her students, Leila, excuse me, her name is, you know, Filipino, so you know, if I mispronounce it, you tell me, Pola Carpio, as a matter of fact, went to the Philippines and taught everything she knows from the Green Team at our local school to where she was from in the Philippines. And they have now implemented recycling, which was never there before, because of this and what happened at the Green Team at Edison. So Elaine, thank you very much for that. And also, just to give you a sample of the writings, she had them keep a journal, as well as I'm sure the rest of them did here, because they're just doers. One little boy wrote, "Use reusable things, not plastic. Recycle, always do not use plastic, it's not good. It cannot hurt the animals, so we have to think about the animals as well." So they wrote thoughts down as the little ones, these are kindergartners, or pre-kindergartners. So, and even parents wrote in letters. So the inspiration starts small and end up ever at Jeff and continue their Green Team, and then they go into businesses and still continue their sustainability. And these are businesses that we want to be a model and students, so thank you, Elaine Francisco, and Green Team, and Jeff, and Businesses, and at all the schools, JEST, Holy Angels. It's wonderful. What a great city we live in, is Daly City. We'll continue to make it sustainable, thanks to the team here.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you again, everybody. It was wonderful seeing all these new faces here in Daly City, and you're welcome to always come back and come to another meeting, and hopefully we all can continue to participate in what you've started. So thank you very much, everybody. Okay. Let me go on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 8, 2019. Do I have any modifications?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, I would like to request a modification on page 3, under the subtitle Reports. The City Council Committee lists four different committees. I'd like to bring to everyone's attention that these are Regional Task Forces, and when you attend as a representative for Regional Task Force, only one council member can attend. And I can see all of these have two members. If we can make the correction, because we report out on them, I would recommend making the suggestion to put the appropriate name for the ones who reported out on it, instead of both names, because regional committees, you cannot have no more than two council members attending. And it appears that two council members attended each one of these meetings.
Okay.
That's the only correction I have.
All right, any other corrections?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on page 3.
3?
As well on council, City Council Reports. There is an adjustment to the paragraph mentioning the streets after a community hero and advocate, Alice Bolos, who served as, it needs to change, on the Federal Commission on Aging. It just says Commissioner on Aging, and also requested City Ventures to donate syrup all signed to Daly City History Guild Museum. So there's those changes that need to be stated. I have them noted here and can pass them on to the City Clerk's office. Also, lastly, on the second, on page 4, there's a last sentence which should state, "In pop culture, whether music," and mention that the artists were world-renowned, so it was indicated there.
Okay, with those modifications, can I get a motion to...
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Objection? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Let me go to approval of the general agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Let's go on to the consent agenda. Do any council members want to pull a consent item? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, the consent is approved. Go to ordinances, item number 4, which is the second reading of ordinance 1428, Management of PCBs During Building Demolition Projects.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of City Council. As you're aware, the first reading and introduction of this ordinance came before the City Council, the last regularly scheduled, agendaized meeting. This is the second reading, to adopt the ordinance by roll call.
Any questions, comments, discussions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
By roll call?
Second.
On, uh, roll call? Roll call, please.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye. All right, let's go on to public appearances, oral communications. I have two speaker cards. The first one is Melissa Lucan. Melissa Lucan? No? Okay. Second speaker card is Nikki Steady.
Yes, sir.
Did I say it right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, once again, council members. I'm just here to report, as the minutes will reflect, that I have not heard from the church at all. There has been no contact from them, and the problem continues.
Okay, thank you very much for reporting that. That's disturbing to hear.
Very.
But we have an agreement, and so I'm sure we're gonna look into it and see what's going on.
If you could refresh my memory, please, so I make sure it's in my notes also. What is the agreement?
That they contact you.
Okay, and then if they don't contact me, which they have not done, what is the next step?
Well, then that's what we're gonna have to talk about, what's the next step. But let's first see about what the problem is and why they haven't contacted you, and it's moving in that direction.
Okay, and then when should I follow up with the council members?
You can follow up anytime, but I'm sure after this meeting, we're gonna find out what's going on. So our next council meeting is in first, I'm sorry, 2nd Monday in May.
2nd Monday in May?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'll see you then.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you all very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any other speaker cards, so let's go on to appointments, boards and commission, any appointments. Hearing none, let's go to the reports, council committee reports. Council committee meetings, April 9 through April 21. Any council committee reports?
Yes.
Go ahead.
All right, without belaboring the issue, I'm sure a lot of folks are familiar with Senate Bill 281 regarding the Cow Palace, and that's still in committee hearings through the Senate. However, there's a piece of property out at the Cow Palace owned by the Sayufis. So we had the pleasure of sitting down with representatives from the Sayufis to include Council Member Manalo, and basically, we wanted to get their thoughts as to their plot of land and what it is that they're looking forward to do. And just basically, just to get an idea, as, you know, it's on Daly City property, but we have hopes to do some development out in that area in the Cow Palace, but we can all do this together. So we basically were just touching bases to see what the thoughts were. We know our folks out in the Bay Shore area is striving for retail and grocery stores, so we definitely keep that in mind. So there's a whole bunch of talking, and we look forward to utilizing those resources later on in the future, pending legislation or if we don't get the legislation. But we are aware of the issues out in the Bay Shore District. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Dr. Dallas?
I attended the CCGA meeting last Thursday, I believe.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, last Thursday. And what we talked about is, we talked about, we solidified our joint powers agreement of adding board members for the San Mateo County Express Lanes and the 101. Soon after that, we also talked about, they had a retreat right afterwards, so we had a retreat about what is CCGA, the history of CCGA, how did it form, what are the functions of each subdivision of CCGA. And as a new council member, as a new person to CCGA, I learned a lot. I learned a lot about how it was formed, what is the purpose of CCGA, and that was about it.
Okay, Ms. Manalo?
The meeting that I attended, City Council, was with Vice Mayor, and so it was around the Development Committee in regards to the Sayufi property. And the Vice Mayor mentioned how, they've indicated how they want to develop that piece of land that they have... of land that they have, and what was reiterated to him. And he knows that the Bay Shore community would love to see amenities, as mentioned, especially out in that area. And so, given the fact that our redevelopment land is right adjacent to, you know, their site, and, you know, it's really us working together. So I am happy to work with the Vice Mayor and look forward to what's ahead with the full council. But, you know, we're pushing along because we know it's needed on that side of our city.
Great. Ms. D. Giovanni?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. One of the meetings I attended was Commute.org, and we had a presentation by Actera. They're a nonprofit, profit, that, something that our Vice Mayor loves, is electronic.
Blessings.
Yeah, electric, yeah, electric cars, the big push. And they actually gave ways that people that are in lower income, they can get a large amount, up to $10,000 in rebates from different areas. Peninsula Clean Energy is going to be offering, and other entities, so that that's the wave of the future. And one of the ways by 2020, they're looking at, it's going to be a big surge, they showed the charts. And I mentioned that about our charging stations here, and how very proud we are here, because they're looking at places to even have, like, not just Actera, but Commute, to promote for people to get out of the cars, but to get electric cars. So I thought that working together with council, that we could probably figure something out out by our ceremony area, not because of just the Tesla, but we have other brand-new ones as well, by the Anderson's Cafe and other things. And it seems like, you know, on the chart, that we look pretty good about offering places. And I know they do it at Jefferson Elementary School District as well, and some other spots. But there are also ways for us to get grants that we can get free, and maybe we can all, as a council, and get, look into that as well. And I think the Vice Mayor is familiar with that. So we can move forward with that. I also was at a meeting with the mayor, which I'll let him explain, that was with our libraries. So that was on the regional level. So that's it for as well. Unless Mr. Mayor take the libraries. No, please.
Any City Council Reports?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Council Member D. Giovanni. Commute.org was a special committee that I was on last year, and they do so much. And you've heard this evening, Dr. Rod, speaking of CCAG.
Oh, yeah.
And then, you know, it's all these organizations coming together to get grants for transportation. On our agenda tonight, there was an issue about a Sam Trans grant to provide transportation. And I do recall, I think Super Canapa is working on an issue to which he wants to donate some money. I think it's through Commute.org or some organization, because east-west transportation, especially for our seniors, and they can get Uber and Lyft rides free.
What?
There is also Safe Ride Home through Commute.org, to which they will pay for, to provide you a ride home late at night, or if you need a ride, and they will pay for it. And of course, there's carpooling. You're going down to work to reduce greenhouse gases, you take somebody in, your car with you, they will pay you for that as well. So again, Council Member D. Giovanni, thank you for that update. And Dr. Rod, because it really, you two are brand-new, and it really, you see different sides of all these different committees to which we are proudly to serve, Daily City. And I'm glad to see you two are coming along, so I want to say thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other City Council Reports? Okay. Since you want me to, so, yeah, we, we had a library committee meeting, and it was attended by Mr. Giovanni and I, and our city manager, as well as members of the DCPLA. And the purpose of the meeting was, basically, DCPLA wanted to know what is it that they could do to help our libraries? And it was very, it was a very generous, kind ask, and they actually were encouraging us to make a big, bold ask. And so we did. And what we asked is, if we wanted to make a bold move, is to see what we can do about the Ceremony Library. And what we wanted to do was either come up with a plan to build a bigger, better library, or to renovate the library as it stands now, because it is in bad shape and it needs some doing. So what we are proposing is to have a feasibility study done to see what we can do in terms of how much it's going to cost, what resources we can draw from to get that library built. One of the models we were looking at was the San Mateo Library, which is a big library that was new several years ago. It's a beautiful library. It's a big library, it's got a lot of space, and I think it has, like, three or four floors, and it's got a big community room. And so if we're all about change and trying to do big, bold things, that may be a path we choose to take. So right now, it's all about the funding that we need to do the feasibility study. And that's where we left it. That's the goal that DCPLA is willing to help us with, and we're hopeful that we can get that going and see where this takes us. That's my report. I don't think you want to add anything? Go ahead.
Yeah, just a little bit. Currently, we have, if we have something that's project-ready, then it'll be, our assembly member has offered to assist us, but it has to be project-ready. So that's why we're looking for the seed money for the feasibility study, which our city manager had suggested that there is someone that may have a trust or whatever that's left over, and it actually was designated for a certain area, which I thought was a great idea, and it's going to be looked into, and that possibly, we could use that to do that, so that obviously, it won't be money out of our pockets. It'll be funded by our assembly member, and for project-ready, and seed money possibly in a very out-of-the-box way.
Thank you.
But thank you, it was a great meeting.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. D. Giovanni. Any other City Council Reports?
Thank you, City Manager.
Yes. Ms. Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend a roundtable discussion with Asian Pacific American Leadership Foundation, Asian Americans for Community Involvement, around Energy Upgrade California, which is a statewide educational initiative empowering Californians and us as Daily City participate. I want to thank Steven for helping me provide the facts to let them know what we're doing here in the city of Daily City. But really, it's urging residents to use the tips recommended by Energy Upgrade California, and also ensuring that saving energy is a habit in our home and business. And since it is Earth Day, just wanted to share with each and every one of you that, you know, there's so many little things that we can do. And I, myself, even learned something that day, that actually, when you utilize some of your power during the day, you know, because there's renewable energy from the sun and solar power, you know, that's actually the best time to use it. But when you use your energy in the evening, it's going to be a lot more for everyone out there. And that's a fact that I never knew. So using LED light bulbs, you know, this is all common knowledge to us now, but it's these little things that make a difference in our community. And so I just wanted to share that with each and every one of you.
Okay. Any other City Council Reports?
I got one, Ms. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I neglected to mention, just attended the San Mateo Office of Emergency Services meeting. The last time, it was a budget committee meeting. So Office of Emergency Services, nothing much has transpired. Supervisor Dave Canapa is the chair. And again, I reiterate that the budget was passed, and Daily City, we have to pay our share due to population, but I made sure that we get to avail ourselves of the services, and that primarily hazmat. And the supervisor reminded me to bring up the issue about N95 masks. Apparently, the health organization is saying it's a detriment, because they say you have to be properly fitted, and kids, it won't help kids. So I asked, well, what do we do? And they said, stay in the house. Well, there's people who want to go outside. So I'm not going to stop there. I think if there's any fires up in North County, we're the first ones to be affected. And we're the largest city in San Mateo. So I will continue to fight and make sure that we're ready the next time, forbid that it doesn't happen again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Any other City Council Reports? Go ahead.
I did, I forget. I need to recreate my list. I usually do this. But, Mr. Mayor, thank you again. I did attend the 50th anniversary of the Asian American Studies Department, in which both Dr. Rod and I, he got his master's there, right? And I got my undergraduate degree. But it was 50 years of anniversary of Asian American Studies Department, also Black Studies, just ethnic studies. If many of you don't know, it's actually the only college of ethnic studies in the nation. You know, a lot of the community work that I take with me here on the council comes from, you know, Asian American Studies, around how do we create communities where we can work together to ensure that it's healthy, and that we have access to education, and really empowering our young people. And so it was a wonderful attended event. We got to see the president of the university as well over there, who will be retiring in June, and also alumni guest speaker, Antonio Vargas. So you can add if there's anything.
Go ahead, Dr. Doss.
Yeah. I had the pleasure to meet Jose Antonio Vargas, who's a Pulitzer Prize-winning journalist. And about, maybe like eight, nine years ago, he came out as an undocumented immigrant. And he's been going around talking about the issues of Dreamers and pathways to citizenship, and really raising the dialogue about the importance of the rights of undocumented people here in the nation, especially those that have came here at a young age, have grown up as an American, but are denied citizenship based on documents. So it was a pleasure to meet him, and meeting other local politicians as well, Gordon Marr from San Francisco, and Jean Kwan from Oakland.
Forgot as well. I attended the Daily City Lions Pasta Bingo, and our police officers were there in the back cooking, and thank you, Mr. Christensen, Captain Christensen, and our chief and his wife, and it was really a great event. It was sold out as usual, so raises good money for our local, for the eye care or anything for our local area. They're going to have another one in September, so I'd like to encourage everybody to go. The food was good, and the camaraderie was great. So that's our Daily City Lions, which is local. Thank you.
Okay. Any others? Any staff reports? No? Okay. Would like to adjourn in memory tonight of Officer Isaac Espinoza. He was San Francisco Police Department Officer on April 10. Was the 14th anniversary of his death. He was gunned down while protecting the citizens of San Francisco. Isaac was a father-husband-decorated police officer and a local boy who grew up in Daily City and attended Westmore High School. In his memory, I'd like us to adjourn. Thank you very much. Good meeting.